Don't be, I'll leave that home, but if it works, I need to write on it.
All right, good morning, Senator Cordial, it's a little past the time to start, sorry about my lateness. Been a busy morning. Say the least, all right, it is now nine five five minutes late, sorry about that again, let's start the meeting. We'll stand for, um, prayer, meditation, however you see fit to use your time. Ask Commissioner Shepherd, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank the man. Take your time, we'll have our roll call, please.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Commissioner Bestfield Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Ivan Owens.
Present.
Vice Chairman Jay Wesley Rainey.
Here.
Uh, Chairman Joshua Derrisso.
Ivan, present, thank you so much. All right, do we have, um, approve of today's agenda?
Chairman, I need to make a motion to amend the agenda to add alcohol, uh, for beer consumed on premises, Cordial T, uh, seven large, excuse me.
All right, been properly moved a second that we'll amend their agenda to add to Agenda Item Number Three, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
At the very bottom, um, to, um, add, uh, Cordial T.
Seven.
Seven, seven mark ink to the list on Agenda Item Number Three. All right, in discussions, seeing none, Chairman both, Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey.
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes.
All right, motion carried, agenda is amended to add Cordial Seven Mark Ink to Agenda Item Number Three. Agenda is approved. All right, approve for the public hearing minutes from October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Second, all right, we need to, um, sorry, got the second, all right, it's been properly moved a second that we're approved of public hearing minutes from October fourteenth meeting, all in favor, let it be known by forceful aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, is approved, approve or recommend a meeting for October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Some of them.
It's been properly moved a second that we're approved of regular minute meetings for October twenty-first, all in favor, let it be known by forceful aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, is approved. Um, I see I don't have any speaker appearances or who I have. All right, with that, we'll move it to our department here, starting the first community advancement, Mr. Hill, good morning to you, sir.
Good morning. How's everybody doing? Well, well, good. So attended the, uh, appeal, youth enrichment meeting, we discussed, uh, during the All-Star Tournament, to try to raise money for, uh, summer programs, attended the Seventh Street Development Meeting, uh, on October twenty-second, we had a BZA meeting, um, on October twenty-third for side areas for the Georgia Home Center, it was approved, um, by the committee with conditions, but with a condition. Um, preparing a packet now for the December fourth BZA meeting, and, uh, that will be to construct a new home here in the city limits. Reviewing sign requests right now for, uh, shopping center on Sixteenth Avenue to provide the Planning and Community Development Director updates on the application, um, to make sure that they meet whatever the zoning ordinances and requirements are. And attended, uh, Galpa Summit on, um, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, um, very good information, and then as Chair of the Intergovernmental Committee, I've provided a vision for the twenty-twenty-six, um, year for our committee. And that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Um, all right, same line, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that's the Finance Department, good morning to you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good, yeah.
Okay, sales tax collection for the month of October was four hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. That's all I have.
Any questions for, uh, finance report? Thank you so much.
Yeah, well.
All right, fine, good morning to you.
Good morning.
This one's gonna be short and sweet as well. This will be for reporting period September thirtieth through October twenty-eighth. Uh, we had eighty-nine total calls for service, cause of note, we had three car fires, two trash or rubbish fires, we did have one burned victim, uh, forty-six calls for medical assist and eight motor vehicle accidents. As far as department news, we attended the downtown spectacular, had a great time there, we also attended the trunk or treat at the Chris County Precay. Uh, there's some pictures there of the events, lot of fun, both of those places. And then I was honored to serve on the interview committee for the new, uh, Chief of Police, and then attended the community meeting afterwards, and I think we have some excellent candidates. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for our Board Chief?
Thank you.
All right. Pop right on up, that's right, HR.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You have my report in your packet, this for the, uh, month of October. Uh, during the month, um, I attended the budget review meetings as well, as well as the, uh, public hearing, uh, for the FY twenty-six budget. Also during that time, I attended the all these ribbon cutting ceremony, the Faith in Blue Flagpole Ceremony, um, and the Advisory Committee Meeting at South Georgia Technical College. The, uh, renewal for the first responder PTSD program was submitted on October the seventeenth. Also working, uh, and that's for the effective period, January the first, also working to complete the firefighter cancer benefit program renewal application, that's also for, uh, that same renewal period. On October the sixteenth, the Medicare Prescription Drug Coverage Open Enrollment Announcement was, uh, was supplied to all employees, uh, that open enrollment period is October the fifteenth through December the seventh. And I also, uh, had the opportunity to attend the police chief, uh, evaluation, interview and public forum meetings. And then, um, lastly, it's not lastly, I'm sorry, uh, just as a reminder, uh, flu vaccines are still available at our wellness center. And then, now lastly, uh, I think at last meeting, Mr. Derrisso, uh, excuse, Chairman Derrisso, requested some information about the police department, the staffing there, asking if those positions were included on the manpower sheets. Wanted to clarify here, uh, if you see on the second page of my report, we've got eight vacancies in the police department. Just want to tell you where those vacancies are at, uh, of course, you know, we have one police chief. In our patrol and detective division, we have twenty-six employees there. Three of those vacancies are in the patrol division, that includes one corporal, two police officers, and one is a detective. The other three positions are in our support services, such as, uh, record technician. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
You said three vacancies in support services?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's eight total, one's the police chief. All right, and then three is patrol, right, patrol, and then three is support.
One detective.
And one detective.
Okay, um, I didn't have it on this report, I was actually gonna include it on the, on the next one, but on, uh, on October the thirtieth, we did have a lunch and learn here for city employees. This is a breast cancer aware- awareness lunch and learn that was, uh, presented by Deborah Herndon of Premise Health, and we had, uh, eleven participants in that program.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Wade? Thank you, sir, thank you for that information, sir, all right, very helpful. Let's see, this one, this of course.
Okay, uh, for the month of October, we had a hundred and forty-five traffic, we had five criminal for a total of a hundred and fifty court cases, we had ten bench warrants, forty-five license suspensions. I, I had a typo on my cash bond, that should be five thousand four hundred and seven. Um, but between our cash bonds, funds and other deposits, we had thirty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cent. We had no transfers to Superior Court. And that's it.
Right, any questions for Nancy? I, I have one question.
Okay.
Um, this commission, I believe, voted at some point to, let me get the word right. Criminalize marijuana. If someone gets pulled over in the city and they get charged, what do they, is it?
It's just a hundred dollar fine.
Is it all?
No probation, and it does not go on the criminal history.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, good morning, please.
Good morning, everyone. Um, this is my October twenty-second through November the fourth, Planning and Community Development Report. I have been conducting pre-planning meetings with code enforcement on proposed zoning and planning projects. I've conducted five site plan reviews for five projects that have been, um, previous here with the city. I am continually to update the City of Cordial's Community Work Program as it relates to the com- comprehensive plan. I am conducting some succession training sessions with, um, members of my team on how to conduct site plan reviews, how to write staff reports, and to introduce them to the Edgree software for the GIS program that we have. I am reviewing the housing plan development studies for the city that was, um, conducted by Georgia Tech. And I'm reviewing our CDBG opportunities for the city, and I'm working with the River Valley Regional Commission on the CDBG grant that was submitted last year, but didn't move forward, so we're looking forward to moving it forward for twenty-twenty-six. And I attended, um, many meetings and, um, during the month of, uh, that period. And that concludes my report, unless you have any other questions.
Any questions in the room?
Yes, I do, this one. I know that you and Mr. Maurice both attended the, uh, land bank summit on October twenty-seventh.
Yes, sir.
And the land banks, you know, has got some issues coming from the county, and I just wanna know if y'all have any idea, or did they say anything that would be of benefit that could possibly help us move the land bank forward? And not be dissolved?
Um, no, sir.
No, okay.
From my understanding. Maurice may want to, as the Executive Director, answer that question?
What I was gonna say is that land banks could be formed by a city and a county, two cities. And the cities and the county, the city doesn't have to be in the county, so we could form one with, as an example, two county. For, um.
So, may I, I'm sorry, may I add some corrections to that? So from my understanding, from the creation, how landbanks are created, it has to be, must be a county and a city. And the only way that you can have two cities is if the county consolidates the cities into their authorization. So you cannot have two cities and create and form a land bank. And I do have that information in terms of creation, uh, how landbanks are created.
Is there a way for the city to do it on their own?
No, sir.
And I don't, Maurice, you were saying Dewey County?
At, at one time.
Hold on, we got too many conversations going on at one time, sit, hold on, hold on, so, we'll get y'all, but the city manager's talking right now.
Maurice, you'd say it's talking about the code from a land bank with Dewey County?
My understanding is two cities can form even if they're not in the same county. So we could form one with Ryan, as I said, so I'll get clarity on that after the fact, we have to complete, but that's what I understood based on the conversation I had, you can get the land.
Okay, so if that, if that be the case, we would still have to have a county entity involved in that, wouldn't we? Cause that would be, how would we? That's why I just said, say it would almost be.
The problem is, of course, that the county has a tax assessment, tax issue, they, they collect more taxes really than we do, so.
So how would we be?
You couldn't debate a taxes here in Dewey County with, with, uh, oh, excuse me, Chris County, not rather Dewey County. So it, it requires county participation, even if tax participation.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what Mr. Hill is trying to say, at one time, Southwest Georgia United Empire is on, was trying to incorporate Chris County and Dewey County in form of a land bank. So that's, he's not completely wrong, but he's saying this is what that originally started out on that board. It was the Southwest Georgia United Empire Zone, Dewey County and Chris County, but Chris County wouldn't come in at that time, so that held up. So when we came here to do it, Chris County and the city said, yes, so now we still at square one.
I think you have multiple campuses here, it should be reasonable, that's what you're suggesting.
So, I, I guess what I take for it, you can have multiple counties come together and do it, but you cannot have a city where a different county are just two cities.
Right.
Right, but if counties want to come together, they can form a regional one, but you can't have like, Cordial can't go to Arizona and say, let's form one, or Cordial can't go to Dewey County and say, let's form one. Chris County can do it with Dewey County or something county for regional, is that correct? That's what all we're seeing.
Yes, sir.
Got it, all right. See, this is a roll out supposed place, it makes sense of it. All right, uh, now we're clear on that. Anything else on the commissioners? So my thing would be, because we know it's important, and we want to do it because, now I said at last meeting, my belief is that the county, you know, um, is, they using leverage and they're doing what's in they, they feel in their business because of some other things, or we have. I'm always proposing, I'm figuring out if we can't get to that goal, what can we do to get there, we're close to it? So my thing is, I think we need to look at, uh, specific laws that the state allows for us to do. Uh, maybe doing a tad is one thing, um, looking at, um, other than specific area to take care of dilapidation, whether we wanna look at what we do with property tax in those areas, how can we come close to it? Knowing that if the county never comes in with us for a land bank, how can we combine things within our authorities, a city to become very, 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 very close to it, is what I'm interested. Because I think it's a really good thing we need to do, but it's off the table, it's off the table, you know? And we having the control, but what I wanna put back on the table, look at all the options that we do have control over, and we do those things, where we can come very close to everything that would be considered a land bank. Whatever that is, I don't know. Um, do you all understand?
I do understand, there is, I went to the CDBG conference, and there is a grant that we can apply for, um, that's considered an urban regional systems grant, they look at an entire area as opposed to just individual properties, and that is something that we propose, I propose to do for twenty, I guess it would be twenty-twenty-seven, because the twenty-twenty-six CDBG grant application is due soon, so it would have to be the twenty-twenty-seven where we would do a proposal of what we can do in terms of, uh, entire district or city for a project. So that's all I have right now, without doing some further research.
That's the problem, we all know, the general government has certain restrictions with how you can acquire disposable property.
Right.
Those restrictions don't exist with authority.
Right.
And when this property comes to the government's attention, it's usually got, sort of got liens on it, both public and private, may be dilapidated, and the, 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 the advantage of the authority, you can wipe all those things out.
Right.
And you can take that property and then sell it. If there's somebody else, cause nobody wants it with all those liens on it, cause those come with the property.
Right.
That's where the real problems essentially come from, we don't have the capacity to do that.
Because the county wants the tax, right, right, in the accessory.
Maybe all the real solution, if, if, uh, imperfect as it is, is the politics of the matter and talking to somebody over there and see what we all think we know what the problem is and see if we can remedy it by, by discussion. I think, Mr. Chairman, that we also, this was observed in the car, we ended up with some people on the authority didn't really understand what the authority was.
Right, right.
Tried to be really polite about that.
I understand, I was there, so I know. Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, police.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, you have your report, um, we'll start with the number of calls for service. Um, our part one crimes, most of those are crimes against properties, not personal crimes. Our part two, uh, number of incidents, community contacts, arrests, twenty-nine arrests, fifty-eight citations. Total calls for service from dispatch, one thousand seven hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand seventy-nine. Uh, departmental news, you, uh, we have our folks in the academy, and they're doing real well. We have our folks here in training, and so staffing, we're looking at, uh, filling some of those positions we talked about. We participated in a number of events this past month, and they were all happy and a good feeling as it relates to the community events. Uh, code compliance, you see those numbers there? Uh, the departmental news as it relates to code, uh, uh, code officers assisted with pickup and trash bags, code officers conducted court hearings on four blighted and one renovation prop- property or demolition. And, uh, we worked on the parking lot in the Cordial Marketplace. Uh, again, you've got a number with permitted commercial construction projects, a number of those, and costs associated with those. And we're still working real closely on our, with animal control as it relates to, uh, intakes and, uh, managing those areas as it relates to everything we need to do with animal control. Any questions or comments?
I don't believe there are any, especially comments. Uh, just, um, uh, uh, announcement of, um, shop with a cop, how can people donate? Uh, cause that's, I know that's big to work to drop off things, the same as it been previous years or?
We, uh, we have a number, I'll, we'll go ahead and post that number on the city's website that you can call, and we can, uh, uh, collect those donations, we've already collected close to two thousand dollars, I believe, for cops with the shop, shop with the cop. And that, again, is always a real good community event.
Right. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That says Public Works.
Good morning, hard day.
May I ask that my honest be sweet, too, short and sweet?
Of course.
Okay, I'm beginning with our cemeteries and parks department, routine grass maintenance is ongoing. The department began installing Christmas decorations this week. Cemeteries and Park has completed fifty-one customer reported and routine maintenance work order for the month of October. Our engineering department has completed eleven customer reported and routine maintenance work order for the stormwater system. Our gas department, um, the annual leak survey is in progress, the gas department has completed thirty-six customer reported and routine maintenance work orders. Uh, moving on to our street department, the street sweeper is back in service, he is currently working on Twenty-Fourth Avenue right now. The sidewalk on, sidewalk repair on Twelfth Avenue between Seventh and Eighth Street is in progress, and the street department has completed five customer reported and routine maintenance work orders. And last we have, well, next we have our water sewer department, the ARPA project phase one, we received final pay request. Phase two, the contractor is still cleaning the TV and the lawn. And last, we have gov deals, no sales occurred for the month of October, and that's all I have. Any questions?
I just have one. I was reviewing these contracts that were sent out to us and as a whole and everything.
Uh huh.
Um, the only way I can seem to make sense in my mind for us not to have contract landscape services is for Public Works to possibly assume all landscaping in, in general, and I was just curious if you could have time possibly to see what kind of personnel and equipment you would have to have for us as a whole to do every contract, cause some of the, it, some of these contracts, it just don't make sense to, uh, and the only way it makes sense is to do it all or none, all or none, to me, after reviewing it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Cause they overlap in so many areas, and then you constantly, the manpower of, thinking that it can all be concentrated on and get it done at one time, because with our contracts, we just do it over there here and over there there, when we can just decide and do it all at once.
But I don't know what personnel and cost.
Saying that would be another way of looking at comparison of what we spend.
I can't make an educated decision without, without a estimated personnel or equipment cost.
Yes, sir.
They have the insurance and all that had to be included, you know, and a lot of it, so.
Okay.
Steph, I mean, Steph, may I just say?
Thank you.
And then, you know, the right of way as well, because I know over the years have been, you know, some confusion about who's responsible for the right of way, whether it's a, you know, in a contract or a public one.
Okay.
Commissioner, I think, Commissioner. That did, when I was reviewing, triggered, you know, uh, my fault to, think one of the things, when we did the raises and the different retirement things, should have looked at the contracts. Uh, because what I looked at, we got contracts and then personnel, and we spent a lot of money by increasing a lot of things. Uh, and, you know, some people, majority of people pay red, but looking at the contracts, I do think that was the case, if you made to see where the would cost, uh, how much more manpower you need to be able to, to absorb what we're paying out outside of the city, or we have, I think it's, where I'm in agreement with you. Or we have, I know that's a lot, a lot of stuff on this, but it's all my public works.
I'll get with the superintendent and sit down with him.
I mean, it seems to me like the personnel might not, I mean, I know we might have to add one or two, but it seems to me like it's an equipment issue, again. Maybe.
Um, like with the, okay, like for example, with the, are you talking about like the holding ponds or?
No, I'm talking about like cemeteries.
Okay.
You mean all the grass?
All the grass, okay, for the grass maintenance, now when I spoke with Eric yesterday. Um, he's the superintendent of cemeteries and parks, and he said that we had the, the equipment, he would, we just don't have the manpower. We would need additional employees.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, they are saying, they said there are eleven vacancies in public works, but you have to open them for these people.
And how many of that specifically in, in, uh, parts of cemetery?
Parts of cemetery.
Parts of cemetery is full, so there. So, again, that's part of the thing is, we may need to do some restructuring those places. Uh. That would create the manpower to do the work that we said needs to get done, and that could balance it out.
Vacancies in.
Right, that's right, that's right, yeah.
So you're saying like that position just won't belong to that specific department?
Well, what we need to do and we can get together is look at the vacancies in public works and see if they are needed. Uh, for whatever division they're allocated for, and if not, then we can look at, um. Uh, eliminating those vacancies to create positions in cemetery and parks.
Okay.
And it could also create, as I was saying, another way of cross-training people with that, because when we find ourselves in those positions, they will have somebody else that can still fill in. Who can do that job, and we won't leave us at a deficit. So it would make more sense. I feel like y'all feel it's the hot seat, we don't know. It ain't no job, it's between y'all and the city manager, we just trying to learn. We ain't trying to put y'all on the hot seat, I promise y'all. We, we ain't trying to put you on the hot seat, for real, we just trying to understand a little bit better. Like, okay, that's it, that's it. Alright, how you doing, Mr. Smart?
Good morning, I'll be Chairman, Commissioners, uh, City Manager Redding, it's good to see you this morning. Uh, my report will be, uh, brief as well, just to tell you that, uh, it's been a busy month. Uh, did have the opportunity to attend and thank you Commissioners and City Manager for allowing me to. Attend the G M A Communicators Conference at St. Simon's, some great information coming out of that. And, uh, a lot of good collaboration, in fact, since I've been back, I've had the opportunity to collaborate with many of my counterparts on different things. And so, it's been a good conference and look forward to implementing some things as we move forward. And other than that, that is the only thing that I have for you today, unless you have any questions.
Alright, any questions from the smart? I'd say no, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's up, is you C N T, it's David. Good morning.
Uh, I didn't have any numbers for you when I printed my report last week, but, um. We treated fifty two million gallons of water and wastewater treated was forty five million. That's a rare thing, when it's actually less, but we only got one point nine inches of rain in the month of October, virtually none in September. And now they're saying that we're in a moderate drought. Awfullest word I have, can ever hear is the word drought, it's terrifying, but. They say if we don't get some rain, some substantial rain in the next week or so, we're gonna be in an extreme drought. And I really don't want to hear that word. But anyway, other than that, y'all go down the street and wave at the voters. Unless y'all have any questions.
That's right, any questions? Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, I think, good morning. How you doing?
Doing good. My, uh, briefing is brief but important. As part of your continuous efforts to improve I T operations, you might recall last fiscal year, you did some replacement. Of some computers, and then this current fiscal year, you've done the remaining replacement, and I wanted to update you on the status of that. The week of October twentieth, Micah Jones came, he's an engineer, systems engineer with Inner Dev, and he was on site. And he worked with myself and, and the departments to do installation of twenty two computers. And prep nine computers for remaining installation, and he'll be back next week after the holiday. To finish up those installations, I do want to say, I won't put anybody on the spot or any departments on the spot. But finance and public works were so helpful with us. Cause it is stressful to, to have potential disruption of your operations. And to do these type of installations and replacements, and we were very grateful for that. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Alright, that gets us right here, uh, agenda items, I don't believe Mr. Brown is here. So, let me commit with you. I'm, I'm number one, but I'll. Yeah, can you pass it? Okay, alright, do we have a motion on the second for agenda item number two?
So moved.
Second, it's been properly moved as second, that we consider an approved resolution, authorize an expedential pass at the end of fiscal year. Alright, uh, any discussion?
Chairman, basically, uh, this resolution, uh, as stated, is authorizing, uh, the city to continue to operate. Uh, uh, and authorizing extended tours passed at, uh, end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, so we're continuing.
Kind of like the local level of C R.
Yes.
Yep. Alright. Any other comments? Alright, so proceed to vote, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Rainey?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried, is approved, alright, um. Agenda item number three, considering approval of renewal of the below, uh, alcohol license to include the one we amended the agenda for. Which is, uh, Cordial seven mark Inc., uh, do we have a motion on the second?
Second.
Been properly moved as second, that we consider an approved, the renewal of his alcohol license, open for discussion. Alright, seeing no, shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Owens, and Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, it is approved, motion carries. Consider and approve the, uh, agreement, uh, agenda item number four, sorry, consider and approve the agreement with Carter. Uh, do we have a motion on the second?
Second.
It's been properly moved as second, that we consider and approve this agreement, alright, open for discussion. Alright, seeing no discussion, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried, is approved, alright. Agenda item number five, discussion of schedule fees, uh, do we have a motion on the second?
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved as second, that we consider, um, I mean, have a discussion of the schedule fees, alright, open for discussion.
Chairman, after looking at the fees, I think, I still think based on what I'm looking at. A ten percent increase is not that much overall, and it would just kind of spread evenly amongst. Everybody, uh, on everything, and. The, the water and sewer tap fees, I do think those need to. Be lowered a little bit and remain a constant without, and change the ordinance on that, where they're not, uh, receiving that constant increase.
When you say constant increase, what you mean?
I believe in that ordinance, it was a ten percent a year.
Percent, ten percent, um, on December nineteenth, ten percent increase.
Sorry, every year, December nineteenth, it goes up?
Yes.
And they're out of line already.
What you say out of line, what you mean?
Uh, for bordering sewer fees to tap into the city water and sewer system, they were higher than. Most municipalities around us.
That's what you mean, out of line?
That's right.
Alright. Any other discussion? So Commissioner Rainey has proposed a ten percent increase. Across the board. And across the board on all the sc- all the fees. Uh, and then a decrease into the tap, water installer tap line that increases ten percent every year. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yes, and I would like to, for us to just get more in line. I'm sorry, to, uh, get more in line with the municipality around us on the water and sewer tap fees.
Alright, any other discussion about the, what other fees do y'all see? Fit to look at or discuss and talk about?
He said ten percent.
Across the board, yeah, ten percent being everyone over. Uh, I, and I'm assuming everyone except what's already automatically programmed to be ten percent, right?
Yes, because most of these would be, you know, in the, most of them are gonna be in the five to ten.
Right, but you're asking for a ten percent increase across the board, whether we just say that right now, that also. To the water and sewage that you want to decrease.
Most everything else, other than those seem in line with me.
Okay.
But those two are out, I feel like are out of line, way out of line.
Why would you want to decrease instead of understand where it is, and just ten percent on the rest, why would that do a decrease?
Well, the ten percent increase was, my understanding was when it was implemented, we were below everybody. And didn't wanna, uh, have just a big increase at the wrong time, so that's why I was putting the ordinance for them to have a ten percent increase. Well, none of the commissions have addressed this, and now that's been an effect, and we ten percent increased every year, and we never stopped it.
I could go with the ten percent increase, ten percent increase, my, my, my logic is, why you want a decrease, why not stay at the same level instead of increase or decrease?
So, so, you, you understand what she's saying, so what you want to decrease, she's saying why don't we just level, leave it where it is and don't do the decrease. I mean, the increase, this December nineteenth, like we stop it this year, we, we won't increase it anymore.
Well, I understand, but I still think, uh, tapping into water and sewers, my understanding, getting close to five thousand dollars. Or, you know, it's for a house, to be able to connect to water and sewer, that's a little out of line, uh, with other municipalities. So I, I want to do a comparison to other municipalities around us, and most of.
I'm saying, cause we don't know what their, do we know what their, the other municipalities are?
Well, Miss Angela brought that to us. But she don't have it with us, but I, I know you're Miss Angela, I mean, City Manager.
I'm sure.
Has, uh, and we were higher than most everybody around us.
I'll locate that and send it back down.
But yeah, but I think what Commissioner Shepherd is saying, it's probably gonna be a way to, at least, until we have a chance to look at that, we'll balance it out for this year.
Yes, just, just not increase.
And, I mean, especially if we're planning to look at what we're saying doing here, that would be a way to balance it out, at least, and then we'll have a chance to go back and do that comparison as well.
That's fine, that's fine, fix it, not do the increase this year.
Okay, now with the deposit of, on the community clubhouse, uh, I'm, I'm saying, are we inclusive? We're gonna include that in that as well. It's gonna be two hundred and seventy five dollars a week. And, and the reason.
Yeah, those fees are set by the, um, coordination board, I just placed those on here, so you all be aware of those. The deposit just changed.
Say we just put back and, uh, address that.
And it's in line with, uh, with Rachel's and.
And that was the reason why we, we made that adjustment as well, you know, for. So, anybody else? Here's why, I don't want to do a ten percent increase across the board, because there are some things that will hurt. Uh, hurt, uh, certain people who are lower income. Than if we have to do across the board, I do want, uh, take a scalpel. And look at things very specific and detailed to what we increase, I think we should maybe look in at, uh. Some things we do, you know, with animal control, right, or what have you. We can go up on some things there, being for mu- uh, more money, or whatever, because it seems like we're getting a lot more people coming. To our animal control shelter for more cities and counties, or what have you, so I, I believe. At the end of the day, I, I know one thing, when something gets scarce, people go up on the price, and I think space will get scarce at some point. Or we have, we have a lot of people donating right now, food and maybe that won't stop, but I can tell you, if it's gonna get hard, maybe it will stop at some point. And then we continue to, um, I think we have four contracts, four or five?
We have six.
Six, okay.
Well, Airbnb was never, uh, you all were agreed to Airbnb, but they sent back garbage that. Was not in line with what we have in the other contracts, but other than Airbnb, we have six.
Okay, so I think there's a way we can strategically look at, um, this stuff. And not hit all low income people, when we're doing a ten percent across the board increase. On things, um. But what I'm looking at. I do think we do really need to do some comparisons to other municipalities before we make any decision, because right now, we're making. Decisions based on what we feel like should be up or down, but again, if we want to stick with the thing of being in line. We need to look at where we are, but also look at some, um, competitive advantages, if we're the only one. Providing the animal shelter, we got a competitive advantage right there, um, to be honest, and so my thing is, um. You know, that's a way that we can probably get some more money. Um, I do not disagree with, um, the line taps, my only question would be, um. Will it impact anything, meaning if we keep it where it is, are we decreasing? Does that mean more people gonna build houses or homes? Or if we leave the same, keep increasing it, because we also know everything increase over time, year to year. Um, you know, part of building a home may be ten percent higher than next year, or what have you. Uh, and maybe that was the rationale of that commission, if we keep it where it is, are people gonna say, I'm not coming to Cordial to build a home? Because now it's ten percent higher, or what have you on those line tap fees, will it make a material difference in people mind? That that's gonna keep them from building a home, they really want to build a home, if not, especially if we're talking about increasing revenues. I don't think we should look at that one specific thing, say that's where we draw a line, I think we can, um. Keep it where it is, or keep that agreement in place, because we are talking about raising other revenues, I don't know. So that's the question I put, uh, to you, is, is that gonna keep somebody from building a home in Cordial?
I noticed, uh, some development of rental property from coming to Cordial, where he was gonna build some rental houses. He just said he wanted, I mean, it stopped him, he said, I, he was looking at develop, build three houses. And he just, uh, I can build these and one of them is cheaper. And he just said, I can build these and one of Robinson's cheaper, once he looked at overall cost, and he did. And moved from Cordial.
Well, it's Ronald Robinson's tap fee.
Um, I don't remember, but it's less than, it's less than Cordial.
How much?
It's been a while ago, I don't know if I have the logo to pull it up on my phone, but.
Cause he's the one that brought it to my attention.
Gotcha.
Cause I just straight didn't know about it, cause he called me and told me why, cause. And I just said, okay, I'll look into it.
Why are you doing that, uh City Manager, uh City Attorney, uh what's your opinion on those particular fees? What do most cities do when it comes to those?
Well, I I I couldn't speak to the comparison issue, but fees are generally set to. To cover the city's cost of providing a particular service.
Right, right.
Whether it's uh a fee for tap on or anything else, how much does it cost to process it? That's what you should look at, I think, as a a maximum. Really not intended to raise additional revenue, but just make sure that we're not losing it. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dogger, how about you, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
No worries, I I know you always flipping and taking enough, uh whether we raise the fees, the the conversation right now, raising the fee, I'm coming to you, City Manager. Raising the fees, um tapping the water and sewage lines, right now we're not in line with other municipalities, we on the higher end. And so in the work that you and Mr. Hill do, uh based on, cause that's gonna be what y'all charged with. We hopefully get some development of homes and things in here, so we can have more options. Right now, Commissioner Rainey has pointed out that there are a whole lot more than with other, well, I won't say a whole lot more, let me take those adjectives back. But we're higher than other municipalities, uh what will be our. Reasoning on it or it it decrease it?
Well, my recommendation would be with um Commissioner Rainey that we should conduct what's going on with the other municipalities, just stations to see what they're charging. And then like that, based on that, so data, it needs to be data driven.
So Mr. Chairman, I've started locating what was sent, but the first one that came out was the city of Sylvester. And so for, I just used three four. And uh inside their city limit is seven hundred, outside nine hundred, for the city of Cordial. Uh the fee is two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars, and then for one inch, um. Inside is eight hundred, outside is one thousand, uh one inch for the city of Cordial is three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And it goes down, cause we have this schedule on the fees, so basically the fees are in just ten inch here. Is sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, ten inch in Sylvester. Inside the city limit is thirty-two hundred, outside three thousand four hundred.
What about a a bigger, slightly bigger city?
Hey, that's what I'm trying to get to the next one, that's hard to get to.
I think pair around Robby, what I would look at, um population line, um. Yeah, cause so that's about one half to one third of our population.
So for Ronald Robbins, um a three-four meter. Inside the city limit is seven hundred and six dollars, outside is one thousand sixty-five. And again, for the city of Cordial, three-four is two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. And if we go, uh I just said two-inch meter is um three thousand seven hundred and thirty. The city of Cordial is is five thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
How much is the last figure?
Uh the two inch. Three, yeah, three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, and the city of Cordial for two inch is five thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
One of Robbins?
No, one of Robbins is.
I mean, the comparison was with one of Robbins, so.
Yes, one of Robbins, so uh yes.
One one of ours was thirty-seven thirty?
Yes, that's for um outside the city.
Uh before we do all that, cause I know time is going, I do think we need to get a few cities, because what I just pulled up. Look like America's and all of these is higher than Ronald Robbins, uh so. And it really, I think, depends on, but I do agree, getting the information that we need to lower all this, cause it seems all is higher than everybody. Or what have, but what I'm also concerned about, what's that gonna do to the money coming in? Because that's the other thing we gotta balance, because if we say we're gonna reduce that, it almost saying that we're gonna have to increase the other fees above ten percent. That's the only way we're gonna be able to balance it, but I don't wanna increase fees across the board with ten percent. I think we really gonna have to get in with the mad people and figure this thing out, like, I really do feel like we gonna, if we do that. We're gonna have to get in and figure out, I don't wanna do a ten percent across the board increase, I just don't. Um. I wanna do increases, cause we have to do increases, but I wanna be very strategic about what increases we're. Doing and making, because we also can, uh I hate using cliches and I can never remember them. Uh but we don't wanna put ourselves in a situation where we're increasing some stuff that also. Can still make Cordial not a attractive place to stay, and so if we do that, yeah, we may be increasing, but then. The pool that we're getting in may be decreased, because we're pushing people out, so to speak. So, uh that's what I will look at more so than anything. But I do think we we probably need to look at and come where somewhere between. Those places, cause the dust on high and Ronald Robbins has a population of about eighty, ninety-five, or what have you, um.
And Michael, um do you know the tap fees in Tifton?
Yes, I actually had just sent to me, so I could give y'all that some bit of information. Um, just on a one-inch water meter for us to install with is one thousand and ten dollars. Uh a two-inch is three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh we also give an option that if someone has a contractor, licensed utility contractor, they can purchase parts only to install, and then make the rest of our system. Uh sewer taps, four-inch sewer taps, six hundred and nine dollars. So and then uh the six-inch is seven hundred and thirty-five, and then we also have some various gas fees. I can tell you that it's like the uh City Attorney said previously, while back we redone our fees, I assisted with it. Went through and looked at what we were purchasing, to get the cost of the parts and everything together, and then you know. You do wanna add a little bit on top of that, figure out roughly your guys' time, equipment and everything, and add something to it, cover it. But our fees were just redone probably about three or four years ago, um and we kind of increased a little bit and then just over the next. So but that's what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, I think I'll probably increase a lot a bit over the years, now I think I got out of here.
And and it does make sense to have a constant increase, cause COVID increased the cost of a lot of things, parts constantly go up, perhaps some associated with it. But whenever I seen y'all's tap fees, I was shocked myself at the the cost of them, and I've had to deal with a couple of. Customers that built some new homes and like, you know, this is crazy that it's as much, I'm like, I understand, trying to build a home, but this is what it is, so.
Yeah.
This is what we gotta go by.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My goal in presenting that was, I want us to look, be more attractive for growth.
Right.
And when we are that that far out of line, uh.
Yeah.
It's a deterrent, and we only have four houses, so that revenue, I mean, that's, it's just a deterrent for people. So those fees, I just knew we're out of line.
Facts are facts, I know them same. I I I agree, we can probably look at that, but then looking at that.
I do have a question, on a uh six-inch tap, that's what most sprinkler systems are.
Yes, so.
Uh if it's not used on that, cause is there a difference in a tap for say a sprinkler system versus a tap for?
So intentionally we do things a little bit different than y'all, if you, that's a commercial tap. Uh the developer's responsible for having that installed, using the licensed utility contractor, we inspect it. They have to install meter that will work with our grid system, and then that's it, like, it's all on them from that standpoint of things. So they may can do it, you know, have a contractor come in and they work with a lot, and get it a little bit cheaper than down HR. But then also, it takes a bigger workload and liability off the city for having to go out there and, you know, dig up a road, tap a six-inch line. Put in, you know, put in six, eight, ten, I said we don't have the tap fees for all those. We moved away from that intentionally, put that all on the developer, so that they can have their contractor tap it, run the line exactly where they want it. We of course inspect it, they have to do pressure testing, everything else, and then. We're done with it, they have it in, they're putting it in where they want it, and you don't have to spend the time doing that, because you're talking about large equipment. You know, expensive tools to do the tab, and then a lot of time takes away from the crews, that they could be responding to leaks and sewer calls and stuff like that. So we quit doing that a while back, we don't use that so bad.
Cause I did get some complaints for that too, because of the cost and uh it's just, it's a codes requirement.
Yeah, um there, you do have to have a meter on it, uh typically we don't charge for fireline use meter, if it's, if it's a. Six-inch commercial line being the building that is gonna be used, they get charged for that usage, a fireline meter never gets charged usage or anything like that, but you have to have a meter. So you can count for that order for daddy, for your offspring.
And and what what could you s- uh explain to them a little bit again, uh what, why did y'all change it? Because of it, it definitely was too much on the city?
It's just, you know, it's it's a lot of work to install a six-inch line, you gotta go out and do a construction, uh. A lot of times that's something you just want to let someone else have the liability and the workload on them, because they can come out. They're they're already gonna be laying a lot of line anyway, you're talking about just coming an extra twenty feet, thirty feet out into the road to tie into your line. Of course, you'll want to inspect it and things of that nature, but let them handle it while they're already there, so it eliminates some scheduling issue where you have to go out, you know, maybe tap. And then they may not be ready to tie to it yet, so they can just kind of lay it off and go. Let them do it as they're developing property, getting onto the property to the meter where they need it, and then they can just tie them down from there.
And so right now, because if 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 as we're imagining, our people have to do, I'm imagining two touches. Our people have to come and do it into the road, and our codes have to come and inspect it, but if we move to something like that, our codes just will have to come in.
Code just goes and inspects it.
Okay.
Exceeds the pressure test and everything else, make sure it's all good, and they, then it's done, you know, then you don't have, you know, you just open up a road. Our currently the district department totally works, you know, they fix all road cuts for the utilities, gas, water, sewer gas. So your contractor's gonna cut it, tap it, and then they'll, you know, as part of it, they repair the road back. I will add this, you know, one thing that we do charge for typically when we do small taps, and we have to do a road cut. We do have a fee that's associated with that as well, it's not very much, especially with this COVID call to ask off, uh it's like three hundred feet of those. But anytime you have to cut a road for someone, we also charge for that as well, but sometimes you're inside the driveway, you don't have to cut the asphalt. But we have to cut the asphalt, we charge for that.
So that may be something we need to look at and move towards.
Well, the whole, this whole topic, this whole topic is, we're not growth friendly. Uh as we need to be, and we need to mo- look at this whole thing and try to be more friendly towards development. Than what we currently are as as a whole, and this is some of the things that are holding us back.
Yeah, and I think specifically, if we move something that, that gets to your goal.
That's right.
Uh and so, and also alleviate pressure on our departments as well, so it gets to another goal. And if we can alleviate that, and we're talking about lawn services, now we can have them doing other things, and consumers doing that, so it. It gets to a lot of goals, or what have you, see, that that why we go to train, learn this stuff, you gotta teach a class. Get you there to teach one of them classes. Okay. Okay.
Uh I'm not sure Cordial population typically is about sixteen, seventeen thousand.
That's right.
It's pretty close, you know, and it's just, I'll share it all with you, and if you have any questions, we can go from there, and any other questions, go ahead.
We are good with anybody who do it better, it's learning from one another, and that's, I mean, that's why we locked in this little table right here, fooling no one from training. That's right, that's right, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would that satisfy you, Commissioner? If we look at that and kind of come back and get that, I see the grin on your face, so alright.
It'll keep me from getting chewed as much as I get chewed.
Alright, well, that's good, okay, alright, um. Now the other fees, um. Because within that ten percent, I just wanna, we're gonna talk about water, sewage. Gas, all of those would go at ten percent, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, uh. Basically, water residential.
I just think we are low, I mean, if we're not gonna do taxes, we gotta do fees. Uh I mean, government not gonna find fees and taxes, and we're at a deficit, and we just gotta cut into it. I and even a ten percent is not gonna come no, come nowhere near covering where we're at, uh what we need, but it's something.
Yeah, I've. I just can't see the end of blue with raising anything, they're gonna increase people bills, and when we on the plus side of our water. Right now, if we, like I always say, years ago, we were losing money gas. And I was like, okay, we gotta do, we gotta do, or what have you, but we're on the plus side in water, I believe, but nothing has changed. So I don't wanna increase, especially when these people, um our citizens are really upset with their power bills, month in and month out. And you know, cause we have to sit down and explain, hey, we ain't got nothing to do with the power company. And a lot of people say, see that Cordial, they keep charging for, I'm like, ah, that ain't no city of Cordial. And a lot of people say, see that Cordelia, they keep charging for, I'm like, ah, that ain't no city Cordelia. Uh with the power, we get the same power bill y'all got, we increasing our, uh what we paid, uh Chris County Power as well. But we get the bill, I tell people the biggest two package, when it comes to looking at bills and signing checks, is Verizon. Chris County and Chris County Power, they're the biggest two.
I I just think we need to do a comparison again to municipalities around us. I mean, Miss Debbie may know this off the top of her head, do you know other municipalities, water rates around us?
I don't, but you can look it up on the North Carolina University dashboard. A W W A does a study every year and they publish it, we used to be dead last, but we went up to three dollars and nine cents, so I don't think we're last. But I was told that Viana charges seven dollars per thousand.
Now in terms of late fees, um disconnect fees and after hours, um we discussed this, this was sent back in February. And so, um I do know for late fees, city of Cordial, five dollars, power company, five dollars. Five dollars, Viana fifteen percent of the bill, well, Viana, Tifton, Albany, Ashburn, Sylvester. Fitzgerald all charge fifteen percent of the bill as a late fee. Now in terms of disconnect fees, city of Cordial fifteen dollars, the power company fifty dollars. Uh Viana forty, Tifton fifty, Ashburn forty five, and Fitzgerald fifty. At the hour, um Cordial fifty, the power company thirty five. Viana seventy five, Tifton fifty, Albany seventy five, Ashburn seventy five, Sylvester forty five, and Fitzgerald seventy five. So that's how we compare in terms of fees, like late fees, disconnect fees, and after hours.
Again, a ten percent increase doesn't even come near putting us in line with other municipalities on those fees. Some of those are a hundred percent higher than that.
A water deposit in the city of Tifton is fifty dollars. It doesn't differentiate between a business, you know, commercial or residential.
Yeah, cause that's what I'm looking at, I'm looking at some. What I'm looking at basically is some variation between the different residential, commercial. I do not, not wanna be growth friendly when it comes to commercial, but at the same time. I look at it, if you can afford to start a business, maybe make them pay a little more. And I hate to put it like that, cause I don't wanna be anti-business, or what have you, but I'm not gonna be in agreement with raising. Things in this, in this economy, um. If people are already not making enough, then then maybe I'll get multiple jobs to raise fees. Versus if we can do anything, we look at where we at on the commercial side of things. When it comes to water, we are utilities, I would say. Because I am, again, cause what we're really talking about, we're talking about this for budget purposes. And as said, ten percent is not gonna come close to where we at, make a huge difference, I'm I'm still in favor of some cuts. Uh and I feel like that's the conversation we may need to have, or what have you, but um. Before it gets out of hand, we have to make some, uh. We 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 all must be out of control of what the ones that have to be made, while it's in our control now, I think we should. Look at making things, um that happen, I I just. Fees I'm good with to a certain degree, to a certain level, but it's wet fees, is that, is is the question. And most people pay whatever they have to pay, they're getting money in some type of way, and they'll pay whatever they have to pay, that's just. The general trend, I guess, of our existence, or what have you, soap go up, you still gotta buy. Uh milk go up, you still gonna buy, bread and what have you, but. Exactly, exactly, but, um. One is market control, they don't have, they don't let, preparation. They they get the control these days, but I do agree, um we all saying we're not in favor of raising taxes, but. Uh that may be something, I mean, for all municipalities and local government at some point, um. Not even me clue what we going in in the fund for, I mean, they're looking at the future, a lot of people gonna have to entertain raising. Taxes, or what have you, and so, um. Yeah, I I think, um.
This part, when you look at our revenue on our audited budget, it's such a small percentage of our revenue, and the taxes was such a huge percent of our revenue. I mean, it was seven, almost seventy percent, it was like, what, sixty seven percent of our revenue comes from taxes?
But it, that's just not public tax.
But these, but our fees is just too, too small of a piece of the pie. It needs to, that's just too small, the pieces of the pie, uh the tax side is already such. A large piece of that.
Well, I still think we probably need to look at it by the case by case basis to make a determination. Because we're gonna look at fees, I'm not in favor of increasing fees for, you know, that side of it. Uh because at the end of the day, we still have to look at the people who we're talking about there, um and I, what's the comparison of? Not that it's a major thing, but what's the comparison of, um. And I know there's another answer that you gonna have, right, I'm talking about cut off, and then, you know, re, um, you know, these reconnect fees. I mean, I I mean, I see the fees, also I'm at, on the average, do we, you know, that one time we did a number of people, how many?
Saying how many people, I can always tell you, I think, is it the third cycle where we have like thirty plus pages? Yeah, it's a lot, and a lot of time it's the same people, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you can go ahead, cause you don't see it more than I do, I just know usually with that cycle.
And it's the same people on the, uh on the list because fifteen dollars is not a deterrent. Now, when it comes to raising the fees, the fees that they can control, like late fees and disconnect fees, those are fees they can control. So if they don't wanna pay them, they pay on time, they don't have to pay those late fees. But fifteen dollars is not a deterrent, we have our guys going out, cause the mob there before the end of the day, they're coming to pay the guys, and they're out, they're turning back on. It's a lot of work on the move, guys.
What 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 date range is the third cycle for you?
I don't know, I'll have to get that.
So, the thing about it is, what we, and I get, you all have a job to do, and I've been on this same thing with every finance director. Since I've been here with that, is underneath that, see, you have facts. But underneath those facts, there's something underneath there, and underneath that, when we talking about the third cycle. We probably talking about people, lowest amount of having money in that month. And so like the finance director, I think, uh before you said, well, people forget, and you know, uh they come in, they pay it that day. And I told my, uh as a kid growing up in the project, sometimes you go borrow that money from an uncle or a loan company to get it done. So while we sometimes in these seats and look at the fact, we don't know what happens for those actual people. That have to pay that money in on that cycle, so I, and it's also my social work brain, or what have you, as well. I think about the vulnerabilities, I think about the people don't have, so we look at, it's the same people, it's the same, I know people. I know that struggles, I pay power bill, water bills, rent, or what have you, people, some won't pay me back, or what have you. So that may be a fact, it's third cycle in the same people, but sometimes we don't know what's going on in people's lives. Cause I've been that child right here in Cordelia, Chris County, where, um, my my parents. Had to go borrow that money from a family member, or go to a loan company to cover bills. And so then they got that plus the loan that they have to cover later on down. And I know we said, well, it's just maybe a hundred dollars or maybe eighty dollars, or what have you. But some people just don't have it, by the time they're putting gas in, taking care of kids, taking care of medicine, taking care of whatever it is. And because it's so low, some people feel like, I can wait on this bill, and I'm gonna wait on this bill, I know. Part of the thing is, where if you just paying, you just paying on time, paying on time becomes a privilege. A lot of people don't wanna realize that, but paying bills on time is a privilege in this economy. And Cordial is a, a large poverty city. A big poverty city, I think twenty seven to thirty percent of snap people. And so, that's about one third, one fourth to one third, or what have you. So that's the only thing I am seeing, uh a lot of people do forget, they just forget, I forgot. I just, it hit submit. No, we paid it, now I know we paid it, but then when I went back, I I I got bills and tied up, and I just hit submit, but. It worked all the way through it, but I just hit submit, my dad called me and said, there's a water, I'm like, what do you mean? I paid it now, it was just that, so people do forget, everybody's not in the same boat, but I do wanna be sensitive. To the people who are on that cycle, who may get paid every two weeks, and that third cycle don't end up on their pay week. Or what have you, as well, um, you know, um, so, I don't know.
Then that's the problem, the the citizens should come and make arrangements with the water department, talk to them, let them know what's going on, you know what I'm saying, like. I don't have no water for this month, so could you hold it till the fifteenth, I bring money in that day, but see, they just assume sometimes that. They're gonna hold it for them, but they're not gonna cut me off, so sometimes we think that.
Or can it be that they just too big that they working for eight to five, what time city hall open?
But sir, they gotta realize, city of Cordial is a government business, you know what I'm saying, I I love them, I love this community, but. It it's it's a business, you got, you're lighting, you're watering, your phone, your phone gonna be cut off. Every, I bet you might, nah, you can call anybody, my phone is gonna be still on, what it what it said, I mean.
Right, right.
But so, call and talk to somebody sometime.
I get that, I get that, but what I'm saying to you, at the end of the day, we don't know what people got going on in their life. And I know y'all look at what people can make a five minute phone call, sometimes I call down here, I don't get nobody in five minutes, and I'm the chairman. I'm just keeping the G with you, I'm the chairman, sometimes I can call down here and don't get nobody in five minutes, I have to call back. So, uh at the end of the day, it, you know, it don't work like we all wanna sit over here and think it works, or what have you, um. I think, when we're talking about fees, and talking about increasing fees, or what have you, um. I like that information, what date range is the third cycle?
What did you say it was, cause she can remember all the days.
I think mine cut off on the twentieth, late part of the month, okay, and mine, right, the twentieth of the month.
Due date is the twenty, and cut off the twenty fifth. See, that's a tough time of month for people, I'm trying to tell y'all, that's a tough time of month for people, um.
But you get your bill, what, two weeks or more before the due date?
It ain't matter when the bill, it matter when the people have the money to pay. I got some bills I'm looking at now, it it this day ain't due, but it when people have the money to pay. I know it's due, it ain't due yet.
Mr. Chairman, no disrespect, but I bet you money, the senior citizens, when they get those checks on the first and third, they come pay their bills.
Is there any way to make all of them do right there around the first or the fifteenth?
How many people pay their bill online versus they come here and pay, cause I know that one mistake, uh do we, do we know that information? I know that's a small feat. That's what I'm assuming. Hey, come up here.
Is there a way of doing two cycles, first and fifteenth?
Turn off.
If there was a way of doing first and fifteenth, I think. Because lots of people get, some people get, most people get paid bi-weekly or.
That's what I'm saying.
Or the far, or once a month.
And that cycle falls in between.
And that cycle falls in between, so I see what the chairman's saying, but if we can make it. So it's the fifth, at least two cycles, the fifteenth and the first, I think you, we wouldn't have as many cutoffs, I think.
Right, I'm on that thirtieth cycle, uh well, my parents on one of them, and then my other place on another. So, uh I have to keep up with both.
I'm just saying, school system is a major employer, employer, and they play once a month, end of month.
We just stay, oh, the day, yeah, I gotta go, I gotta go see him, I love my son, geez, I tell you. I remember pay, my mom make sure I pay for dinner.
But I had to cut my drive off with the table, I gotta eat, and they gave me like three hundred something dollars, I come home, the drive lane.
I'll tell you, my age or such, meaning, they say if you can put your bill out of there, you doing real good. Especially people have apple, they buy apple, don't care, they gonna take their land a little bit of money. Look, your man back there, that's your hair, right, apple gonna get there. Uh I don't wanna beat this too hard, cause I, I'm in between, I understand what you all dealing with. But I am a representative of the people, and I understand the people that come to me and what they dealing with, and again, I like to. Make sense of what may be happening underneath the facts that we presented, because we can present facts, but we gotta contextualize those facts. And I'm just looking at that larger cutoff time, I believe there's a correlation between that cutoff time and when people can pay or able to pay. And so, that's just my thing, I don't have a solution in my head right now. I do understand that we're low on the fees when it comes to that, I do understand we can do, um, a little bit better. Um. But I know how many younger people. Just drive outside of Cordial to work, and then they end up a year or two leaving the city of Cordial. And so, uh we can go up on these fees, but then if you're getting less overall for people. It puts us in the city not still in a better situation, you know, cause we got a hundred people today, or what have you, you go up on. Maybe we'll get, if it is, just keep mad, three hundred dollars, I know it ain't this amount. But then that reduces seventy five people over time, and you go up, that money's still gonna go down if someone get to the same. And we'll be back when we are, so that's what I'm looking at, um, um, as well, um. Tough decisions, but I don't wanna be the, be the, you know, I need that law. But we do have to make a decision, uh uh we should be making a decision on what we wanna do with these fees and come up with some, so I. Commissioner Rainey has proposed what he wanna do, ten percent across the board, I think, um. What I'll say, I'll look at them, in particular, maybe a more detail. Uh, what I'll say, I'll look at them in particular, maybe a more detail. And compare and then come back and say, this is what I think of a bit more specifically in detail.
I agree, I think after hearing some of the information we've heard of this city as we talked about, it also kinda helps us to get a clearer picture of what we thinking. Because we can understand what finance has to deal with and we can also see where we are with, with the basic consumer. That's dependent upon not having to, well, trying to figure out how they would pay these bills.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, we still gotta look at whether what cycle they on, at the end of the day, it still has to be paid. And if they're having an issue with paying the first, second, third, whatever cycle they on, we gotta look at what's gonna make it. Not easier, but make it best for everybody. So that means that we, we'll have to definitely look at the, the, the ups and the downs of both sides. But I think hearing the conversation that we just heard from all angles of it, it helps us to get a better perspective of it. And even to the point of, of the fees that, um, we will compare with Timpit does, that helps us to get a clear insight of what we need to do because. A dollar we. It's just rolled off, you know, and we need to definitely go back and look at it clearer now. So, I like your word scaffold.
Yeah. Let's throw it up, somebody can tell you. Alright, any more discussion on schedule fees? Seeing that, Michelle move on to Gemma, I don't see it's holding time. We had a quote from twenty twenty-two is what I'm looking at, and. So looking at this, uh, comparison. Based on what we have, what is the best, um. Because either, I'm, I'm thinking, either we gonna have more deeper ones, more shallow ones. What do we have? We have a total of what, six or eight?
Six or seven.
I read somewhere eight, that's why I was confused, uh, but maybe I'm a typo, but. I knew we had at least six, but we have seven. And so, I think what I'm looking at, the, the, on the best decisions to make, um. It seems on the labor equipment, I mean on the next maintenance. Like the drag line looks a little bit better, but I'm also looking at if we don't have ones that deep. And I'd say it can reach, um, or what have you, um. So, the distance, reach distance, what I'm looking at, the third down. So we have one beyond twenty to forty-five feet, right? Then we may be looking at, have to be some different for that specific one. But if we have some arrange interval from twenty to a hundred feet, then it looking like the drag line will be better. Because the drag line can accommodate, I'm, I'm assuming shallow windy. And then the maintenance is better with the drag line than this escalator, um.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, you need both. About half of our ponds are, are have water in them and the other half do not. They hold water. Um, so the drag line would be more efficient on the ones that are deeper and hold water. The excavators way more efficient, if you take the one, the, I think there's like two or three over there right off of. Eighteenth or nineteenth and Joe Wright, all those need to be dug out. Down to that cement, uh, run that runs all the way around it and taper it back, just taper it back all the way. And haul it off, and that's gonna have to be done every couple of years, but they also have to be mowed. So they, those stay dry and they need to be mowed probably once a month to keep. The residents happy around there, cause those are dry and capable of being mowed. So, again, that's where I'm going back to the lawn maintenance and equipment, but. Over half, I think there's like three that hold water all the time that the dredge line, drag line would apply to. And then you got where they go out, where they go into the ditches to drain. We got a hydro excavator that, that could be dug out very easily with that hydro excavators, like a pressure washer with a vacuum. They can pressure wash it down to the cement and not damage it, uh, keep those exits open. Uh, the main thing is, is those holding ponds, it's still gotta be mowed around.
Right.
Uh, monthly.
Right.
But the drag line on them others, on three of them would be, you know, like it says, probably every ten years. The others are gonna be probably annual or about every couple of years on the digging. Because the ditches are gonna bring dirt into them and they're gonna fill.
Right.
And we got it done, sure, so it's really just the excavator and the capabilities mowing these, those ponds. To keep the snake issues down for the residents.
And we can have the excavator.
So we had a excavator, but our question came up was the manpower, if we did it ourselves, was that right? And so.
And that's what I'm referring to is all the mowing, taking into consideration the ponds, the cemetery and everything. Um, if we do it all, I think it makes sense to buy the equipment, if we don't do it all, it makes more sense to keep a contract.
Yeah, I think this conversation will have to include after looking at what we discussed earlier, public works, if you can, um. Um, reallocate positions to that particular department versus the other. Uh, departments and things like that, so I think we can't make a educated decision just yet. Or informed decision just yet until we understand what we can do on that, uh, on that level. Uh, cause that's a piece of proposal that I believe.
I am right, three, three are with?
Three out of seven. And what, what didn't totally come up for our last person that did the, the holding ponds, what, what, what's the total payout? Because as I read the contract, was it five hundred a day? Or was that saying if they went over, the, the language to me wasn't low.
Oh, um, it was one twenty-five and then if they. Uh, did not meet the, um, timeframe, then I think.
Yeah, that's too bad, that still is savings to us because that would be their job. Right. Job duty. Right. More so than waiting for someone to come back, because we also risked the contractors, if they get started on something else, they can't come back and complete, then we're looking at them.
Well, and that's why we put that fee in there to charge, uh, liquidated.
Right.
To be honest, we, we spent bad money on that because of the instructions that were given to the contract. And what I mean is, is when you say dig down to the cement and you wanna see the cement, you wanna go all the way around it. Well, you dig down to it, it's like a ditch on either side of dirt. Well, the next time it rains, the water comes in, erodes and it falls right back down on it. So if you don't dig the whole thing out and taper it, it's bad money. I mean, cause it just, you covered up what you just paid somebody to do. So, I mean, that's one of the jobs that you just gotta do the whole thing and grade it, the way that contract read. Taper it the way it, to make it all run towards the, uh, cement. Well, if you taper it, I mean, you didn't say how far to taper it, you didn't say whether to taper it over ten feet, twenty feet or. Uh, two percent grade or three percent grade, you need to, it just needs to grade gradually all the way.
Well, I don't know if I can agree with you on that. I don't totally disagree with you, let me say that. But that's why I believe you get experienced people, because the experienced person would know what's best and what's not best in that. Uh, when you get people who do it or what have you, I think they can then come and inform you. That nah, it'd be better to do it this way. Um, so.
I'm just saying, I've worked with equipment a long time, you gonna keep that mowing, so you can mow, you can't mow it steep ankles. You gotta sit there and have a tape all the way.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
You got, you make a weed eating nightmare.
I'm just saying, you said it was bad.
Grade, you can maintain.
I, I think I just have an issue with you saying it was bad instructions, like that is like if I hire. A plumber and I'm asking a plumber, I'm telling the plumber, yeah, I need you to go down and do this, now the plumber need to tell me what's best to do. You know, once they get there, the plumber need to tell me, um, no, you may want it that way, but if I do it this way. We gonna have problems, you know, so I don't think that was on us. Until it came to, we let one person to bid it out or what have you, and I listened to them, and I think I, I was somewhere traveling. But I, I listened to that particular contractor's explanation and I went too confident. Then, I would have, that's me y'all snuck it in, because they remember your Commissioner Reeves was up here. And the two of them had leave and I didn't go along with it, but you all called the meeting to give them that contract. You did a special call meeting to give them that contract, but again, um. When you say I think that was bad instructions, nah, I think that was a bad contractor for that job or what have you, that's my opinion, um. You know, cause at some point it'd be like, nah, this is the way we do it, you know, or what have you, cause if you do it that way. You gotta be able to hire somebody to tell you that, if you do it that way, you gonna have this problem, this the way I need to do it. And when they put in that contract, when they, they, they bid a hundred and twenty-five thousand, they knew the scope of the work that needed to be done. And if they said, well, I do it the way you tell me to do it, and know we gonna have problems, but. The only thing in my mind, I can think of, they looking to come back and redo it again so they can get another, as soon as they can. So. You know, um. I think part of what it is, is like, we, we just gotta hire people that know what they doing when they do it. And can tell us the best way to do it if we don't know, versus us hiring them to say, do it this way. Uh, because of the people hiring know more than the people doing what's upon the hiring. I don't know. You know, a lot of people always say, I think I'm reeducated, that make a lot of common sense to me. So, um. I think we just, if we, if we go with contract labor, I like to see us bid this thing out. And, you know, because I remember there was one somebody that was maybe a, a couple hours late. On this contract or what have you, and I think that person showed it to the meeting, I didn't ever see that person because, again, I was traveling. And, uh, I just remember, and I think that person asked, could they say anything or what have you at the time, and we said, no, you can't say anything. Uh, but I think at, at some point, because there is a thing, if I'm right, city of turn the low responsible better. And, and that's, there's certain parameters in that low responsible better that we supposed to allow or what have you. And so, um. If, if we don't have that, we don't need to just shoot to, well, that's the only person that got there. Nine AM on Tuesday morning, well, you may have to stand it sometimes. Uh, and, and, and then make that decision, that's all I'm saying with that, um. I'm being careful because I don't wanna make it about anything personal or political. But I will say, I don't think we did the right thing, that, and I'll stop at that. But anyway, um, with. But before we go forward, I do think, I mean, the public works, seeing you get together, we'll be better informed which way we can go. Alright, any more on the holding pond? I think that brings us to your report, City Manager.
Good morning again, City Manager's report, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Just a recap of some previous events, as you can see, we had the annual pink out photo. Uh, with city of Cordill employees, and so I appreciate all employees who participated. In, uh, the pink out photo. Uh, we, this is I think second or third year for the Halloween contest. And, uh, just a few examples here, a few costumes that. We had, we always, uh, make sure they know we still, we have fun, but. You know, we do have customers coming into the building, so just make sure it's appropriate. And so, um, again, just a few of the costumes and this is the winner for this year. Um, Victoria dressed as hot dogs, so the judges like that outfit. A few, uh, upcoming events on, uh, Saturday, November eighth, we have the Rand, Rail Fan Festival. Uh, usually they turn out for that and then Sam's short line will also be, uh, running that day. And so those are the two events for November eighth. On Thursday, November thirteenth, we will have our faith-based ministers meeting at the Community Clubhouse. We're back to the normal time of nine thirty AM. On November thirteenth, uh, Chris Community Council will hold their cares awards event. At Lake Blackshear and again, that is on November thirteenth, uh, beginning at, uh, six PM. And Greater New Birth Family Outreach Ministry, uh, again, will have an event, uh, on Saturday, November fifteenth. For, uh, students, uh, kindergarten through twelfth grade. The diaper distribution program is still ongoing, correct Commissioner Shepherd?
Okay.
Okay, I'll write it in there, the blood drive at the Community Clubhouse on Thursday, November the twenty-fifth. From one PM to six PM. From one PM to six PM. Well, today is Election Day, November four. You voted your side precincts uh today, and it's seven AM to seven PM, so, um. And that's it for that. City updates, uh dumpster locations, uh we're still running Monday, Friday, eight to four, and then on Saturday, nine to two. Sometimes nine to four, just depending on uh activity at um at the dumpster location. We're still in the midst of alcohol renewals, as you all can see from the agenda today, and we will have more until December sixteenth. Just remember, for businesses that serve alcohol, December thirty-first. Is uh after December thirty-first, you would not be able to serve alcohol if you have not renewed your alcohol license. Um just had to step out in the property tax sale, we have quite a few people out there. So it seems to be going well this morning. It started at ten. In the drive-through window, we're almost there, that's all I can say about that. We're almost there, but at least the cabinet is in, right? And so, got enough family, so we're almost there. Just uh to uh show some projects that have been on going around the city. Uh we received complaints regarding this uh deep ditch, as you can see, at the corner of Twentieth and Eighth Street. And so I spoke with Public Works about installing the guard rail because it is deep. And so that has been installed, and I think there's one more activity that they need to complete, and then we'll be finished with that particular uh. Project. Uh of course, Christmas decorations are going up right after Halloween, so we're moving into Christmas season. And then I will ask Marcia to explain, uh the the picture on the left, explain what we had to do in terms of. Uh I think we had a leak or something for the gas, over at the gas pumps.
Um, the field buttes they needed to be replaced. And so we contacted Ford Equipment Company, and they had a company come out, and they replaced um the raises field.
So we've gotten that taken care of.
On that note, when you were talking about, cuz on our page, we have a different page, we have the.
Oh, you know what, cuz it was sent last night.
No, you're fine next to the dish, but you said we received some complaints. I thought you was talking about the Christmas decorations. But my question is, how long have we had those decorations? Cuz I do receive, it's about the same decorations growing up every year.
For ye- yeah, for years, and um and I've been in touch. I know the Chamber, they purchased some, and um. And Main Street purchased some, and so I've been in conversation with Monica that we need to update. And definitely, hopefully, we will have our new tree by uh the parade. Because last year, we had the tree that for years was hanging over Seventh Street before. Uh Department of Transportation had us remove it.
Majority of them are less than ten years old. They were purchased uh twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Uh so, the others before that were. And then the uh. Woodworking Department at the uh high school made uh containers to store them, so those, these will hold up there. And so they're being stored, and that was a project. But there's supposed to be money annually that goes towards buying. Supposed to not have to raise forty thousand dollars to buy one.
And usually after Christmas, they will send um. Uh uh Christmas decorations on sale, and so that's when I told Monica we would look, you know, once we get those. Because then there's some of them are half price, mhm, some are half price, so. All right, but yes, no complaints about Christmas decorations. At least not yet. Okay, and these are just a few photos of uh Grant, of course, has the drone and. And you all know, this is the third of a year in construction project over on fifteen uh ADS, and so they're coming along with that project as well. And so thanks to Grant for those, for those. And then just, and you don't have this one either, this was something uh that um. A complaint was made, and so I wanted to just make sure that the residents understand, and it's more than I located this. Uh you know, that when they receive, and I I just use this one as an example. Um uh a young lady, I think, made the comment that the city manager had PD shut her down. Uh it was a, from my understanding, a petler situation. Even on the weekend, I received calls from. Either the property owner or residents or staff asking. If this person has a permit to set up as a peddler. I will say, the clerks are really good in that if the person comes in and applies for a peddler uh or. Pick up a peddler permit, they will send the information out. This person will be set up at whatever location. They send it to me and to codes in the police department so that we are aware of that. And so, if a person has set up, and I receive a call, and I ask them to go out. What I'm asking them to do is to check and see. First of all, the question is, do you have a permit? And if they do, they're fine, but if not, they do ask them to cease operations because they do not have a permit. And they do not have written permission from the property owner. And so, uh the res-. You know, to them, they should say that you're set up, you don't have a permit, so we're asking you to cease operations. Go by City Hall, you know, and obtain a permit, but also they need written permission from uh the property owner. Instead of saying, the city manager sent me out here to shut you down. That's not how the conversation went. The conversation was check and see, because if they have a permit, they're fine. And then it's not fair to the other peddlers who have paid for a permit, and a peddler permit is two hundred dollars a year. And then it expires on December thirty-first, but also, again, a letter from the property owner, not the manager of the store. Because sometimes they're not the property owner. And then also, um, in terms of uh sanitation. Remember, we outsource sanitation. If you have a uh sanitation on your account. Then just remember that Express Disposal will pick up two buck items the same day when you have your trash pickup. But they will also pick up yard debris, so they have the trucks that run behind each other to pick up those items. And so, anything that comes to me, I want the residents to understand that. If you see what's posted here, as city manager, it is my job to enforce the. Uh charter to enforce the ordinances that have been approved by the governing body. And so it's not something that I am coming up with, it's something that is based on an ordinance. Or something that has been approved by the governing body. And so I just wanted to make that clear. And then in terms of job openings, um I remember reading somewhere where the statement was made. The city commission allowed the city manager to post the police job for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars a year. Where the city commission did not do that. If we have a job opening, then we post it, and the salary is posted according to the salary range. That was approved in the Classification and Compensation Plan that was approved by the city commission. So sometimes the posting would say ninety-two thousand to a hundred and forty thousand, I'm just using that as an example. Or, you know, up to this amount. And so, again, uh. There are ranges for each position, and you have that leeway so that you can say, based on experience, you know, you can. Do this, but uh I just wanted to provide clarification um that, you know, that statement was not correct. That the city commission allowed me to post a position for a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So I always try to address misinformation because I want residents to know and to operate on facts, not misinformation. And so, I know, I know, because no matter what you do, you're not gonna please everybody, so. But at least, this is a fact, that what I do is based on what has been approved by the city commission. So thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Uh on Tuesday, November eleventh, um the city city offices nonessential personnel will be off. In observance of Veterans Day, we will reopen on Wednesday, November twelfth at eight eight AM. And along that same line, we have employees who are veterans, and we do want to thank them for their service. As you can see, for uh United States Marine, uh Chuck Fowle, uh Police Department, Mike Van Hooten. Uh wastewater treatment plant, and John White Wastewater Treatment Plant, uh plant, um. Navy, Lucius Bagley, uh Fire Department, United States Army, Dennis Bryant. With Wastewater Treatment, Joy Jackson, Public Works, Wes Metter, Public Works, Tony Powell, Public Works. And Captain uh Jeremy Taylor, Police Department, and then Department of the Air Force, Louis New Police Department. And Kenan Raines Police Department, so we do wanna thank them for their service.
Army, that's right.
Army. So from the elected body, we have Commissioner Owens, the Army. Thank you for your service. And then, of course, you all have my uh meetings and events for the month of October, and that's all I have. Unless you all have questions.
I had a question, but it went away, so. Yes, but before we do that, I will say just about the elections. Um, and I'm mostly talking to the public, not anybody in this room. Whatever the outcome may be, today or December second, cuz a lot of these races may go to the runoff. Whoever is elected in these seats, we gotta understand that Cordill has elected these people. And people need to come together and work with whoever elected, not attack, not, um. Stay in corners, or what have you. That if everybody loves Cordill like they say they love Cordill. And they're running for office, then no matter who gets these seats up here, your goal is to work with those people. My thing is, it has to be a mutual thing. You don't get to come and attack, attack, and then expect people to work with you, or what have you. Because if the goal is to improve and better Cordill, then that means, well, whoever wins, we all need to make sure that Cordill is winning. The last four years, and I can say I'm dead dog tired, the last four years, I speak for myself. But I also can give a little bit from Commissioner Owens that we have been doing nothing but fighting. That's not. That does not need to continue with whoever. If I'm not here in a seat in twenty twenty-six, my goal is to still work with whoever in these seats. And I am going to come to them because they won the seat, out of respect for that. With John Wiggins, I beat John Wiggins for the same seat, or what have you. I, the last meeting. In my head, I started to be disrespectful to John Wiggins, and I got myself up and I walked out this room. Because what I told myself is, if I disrespected John Wiggins, then when I am sitting in his very seat. What can I expect from people or me? So whoever wins these elections, we need to understand that we need to work with them, come to them. Because they can come to everybody, everywhere, all the time. And work with the elected officials of this city. To better all of Cordill. If your person did not win. Then you shouldn't stand in your corner. That's the goal for Cordill, that's where Cordill has to grow and get beyond, or what have you. I I I tell people, I don't have another four years to fight. I don't, and I would not be fighting another four years. So the goal is, after these elections, these next, today, and maybe another month from now. You may be on your team, on your side, but when that's said and done, y'all need to put back on the same jerseys and march the same way. That's the hope for Cordill, Cordill's gonna grow. So that's what I like to see, that's my piece on the election piece, or what have you. Um and and that's been my hope and prayer, um. Um, as I go to sleep, and when I do my moments of silent, my silent prayer during these meetings, or what have you. Um, now, I'm not gonna come together with anybody who's trying to punch me in the mouth. Y'all know me by now, or what have you, I'm gonna keep a fist up myself. But my goal is, we all put our fist down, and we put our hand out to help one another. Uh so that's the hope and that's the goal for um this city. Uh but with that, anything from others just now?
I have enough, ma'am, make it now before we go.
Yes, ma'am.
Um for those who have been calling about the energy system, well, the falling winter. Because of the federal government shutdown, there are no funds allocated for heat at this time. No funds available yet. Once we're notified, we will post, you know, that funds are available. Cordill need to call Maker E O C, um if you need more questions. Uh what should you do, which is now you're in community, and I'll be doing it this year. So if you have any question, you can call me, and I will answer you and give you the correct numbers. And thank you all for working with us.
All right, with that, uh um the city attorney had requested an executive session for litigation reasons. Do we have a motion to second and an executive session?
Motion to executive session.
All right, been properly moved that we enter to executive session to um discuss litigation at eleven twelve AM. All in favor, let it be known by voice or eye. All right, motion carry. During the executive session, all right. Do we have a motion in the second to come out of executive session? It's been properly moved, the second that we come out of executive session right at eleven thirty AM. All in favor, let it be known by voice or eye. All right, motion carries, all right. Now, do we have a motion to um set the agreed amount, um. Discuss an executive session for litigation? It's been properly moved, the second that we uh approve the agreed amount, um discuss an executive session. All right, we shall proceed to vote, Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes.
Commissioner Rainey.
Yes.
All right, uh motion carry is approved. All right, uh before we call for adjournment, do we have any announcements?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman, I wanna uh take this opportunity, most of you know that my daughter, um and her husband were. Um a part of the hurricane, Melissa in Jamaica, they were trapped there. They went there for their second wedding anniversary, and just as they were preparing to leave, uh all flights were canceled and. After the airport that they would have been flying out was destroyed, they were having to stay there throughout, but they finally made it home. This past Saturday morning, um at seven thirty, after a very harrowing experience, um. Um and you just have, you just have to know my child and her weird sense of humor, but she, so her husband. What color she wants to be buried in is because. But um I I just wanna thank you all because um from the viewpoint of a parent, that was a very um. Difficult thing to deal with, and um one of the things I learned during this time, what we see on TV is not always what we need to share with somebody. Because they could not, they did not know what was being reported because they had lost contact with that side of the world. And each time they did get a bar, and they could call home, they were trying to call their parents to let us know what was what was going on with them. But I wanna thank you all for your concern and your prayers, uh and just know that it's a um. It's a different ballgame. When you think you can control everything, you realize you can't control some things, and I like to have my. I like to have my hands on everything and I could not have my hands on that situation, so. I had to be, uh I had to rely upon the strength of people calling me to make sure. Because uh it's definitely a different ballgame. It's definitely a different ballgame and the people of Jamaica, um. Took a very hard hit, according to what she said. She shared with us just the other night that um she got home. And got her shower and she realized she had a glass in her foot that she uh never knew. Because she said her adrenaline was just so high with going on and moving so quickly, she didn't realize until she had gotten home. But they're home safe. And I thank you all for your concern.
Right, right, right.
And you need a reason to shout.
There you go. You just never know.
You never know.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank to the community. I I I will say there was a moment when people, you know, well, going around, people asking me. You know, how you doing? So the community was very concerned, yes, that, you know, you know, that's right. Uh thank you. Any other announcements? All right, with that, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved, second that we adjourn this meeting at eleven thirty-four AM. All in favor, let it be known by voice for.